Anderson.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
And Kip Ward.
Here.
Okay, comments from citizens present. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the agency's attention any item not listed on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others. As a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. However, at the conclusion of this agenda item, a council, an agency member can discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The chair has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. And Ms. Robertson says there was no one signed up to speak. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is minutes of meetings. The minutes of May 8th were incomplete. There was only one page. So I think we should consider those at a different date. The May 22nd meeting started out with Vice Agency Chair Judy Casper convening the meeting, but she did not. I was present at that meeting. I called that meeting to order. I have made that change. I have made the city recorder aware of that change. So do I have a motion regarding the May 22nd meeting minutes?
I move to approve with the changes that you requested.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the May 22nd, 2017 minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is presentations. Grant update from the Small Business Development Center by David Price.
Thank you very much, Chair Walkie, Mayor Williams, members of the council slash agency. My name is Dave Price and I am the Director of Small Business Development and Community Education at Oregon Coast Community College. And I'm here tonight because we are very grateful to have been the recipient of urban renewal grant funds for the, program funds, I should say, for the last four years. This is part of the same economic development program for folks watching at home who may not be familiar, and also for the benefit of the three city councilor slash agency members who haven't heard this presentation before. I thought I'd give a little background and just to introduce that, the, this is the same pool of funds that supports facade improvement loans and that sort of thing, economic development loans administered by the Urban Renewal Agency. And it's always been our contention, certainly since the beginning of this program, that allowing businesses through, by using these funds to scholarship into various classes, workshops, and programs at the Small Business Development Center here at Oregon Coast Community College, we can help build stronger businesses, more vital business communities, and increase the number of employees in the district and the overall health and vitality of the urban renewal district and by extension, the city and county. And so that's where this comes from. That's why I'm here today. It's part of the economic toolkit with the Urban Renewal Agency. And so I thought that might be a little illustrative for, again, folks watching at home wondering what I'm doing here in front of urban renewal. Also, by way of a little bit of background, the Oregon Coast Community College hosts the SBDC, has for quite some time, ever since its founding, 30 years ago. Hope you all took a moment on May 19th to celebrate the 30th birthday of Oregon Coast Community College. This Friday, we're going to celebrate the 29th commencement at OCCC. And I hope you all will come. And so next year will be our 30th commencement. We're very excited about that. The college offers a variety of different services, obviously two-year associate degrees, transfer degrees for students who might be heading to four-year institutions elsewhere. We have a vibrant nursing program. We have a one-of-a-kind aquarium science program. We have a thriving GED program. In Lincoln City, that GED program has been led by the same person, Julie Reynolds O'Trugman, for the last 30 years. She's remarkable. And also, we have expanded options in other programs that engage high school students. One leaps to mind. I met with him last night. Nate Wright is a Lincoln City Taft High School student who just last week walked across, what, two days ago, walked across the stage at Taft, got his diploma. Friday, he'll walk across the stage in Newport and pick up his associate's degree at the same time. I think that's awesome. Tyler Johnson did it at Taft before him. Brooke Foiles is doing it at Newport High School this week as well. It's just wonderful to see kids take advantage of the resources that are right down the street, quite literally, and we are thrilled to do that. So that's a little bit about the college, wrapping up with the fact that we are in pursuit of independent accreditation. This Friday, the students who cross the stage at Oregon Coast will take a diploma that says Portland Community College on it, and it's going to be identical to the credits that they would have received had they lived in downtown Portland. And that's great. We love Portland Community College and we thank them for being our accrediting partner, but we are fully engaged with their active support in our own independent accreditation efforts. This is a seven-year process. We started it in earnest in July of 2014 when Brigida Riesling, our president, arrived on the scene and from Portland Community College, as it happens, where she was president of the Rock Creek Campus. And so we are on our way towards independent accreditation, and you'll hear more about that in the months and years to come. So the SBDC, why I'm here tonight, we exist at all of the community colleges in Oregon. There's an SBDC chapter at every single one of the 17 schools. Two universities also have SBDCs, that's eastern and southern. And in Lincoln County, we've always thought that the OCC SBDC exists to help build wealth and joy in Lincoln County. And we do that by helping to start, grow, and retain profitable businesses right here at home. And we do that in three basic ways, and that is free one-on-one business advising, low cost and free workshops and instruction, and then information referral services. And I also have on here some of the other workshops on relevant topics. For example, we recently held a very well-attended event talking about the business ramifications of the upcoming eclipse in August. In fact, we heard so much from that that we've actually scheduled a series of luncheons at the SBDC this summer, starting July the 10th. We're going to meet Mondays and leading up to, I think, the 14th of August, and we're going to talk about different issues and different aspects as people have concerns. This is still popping up on the radar for some folks. And we're going to meet monthly, or meet weekly and talk about it. Not at all in some sort of Chicken Little that's guys falling, but more about how we can all take advantage of the eclipse and make the most of it, while also recognizing some of the challenges it will bring. And one of the key services that the Small Business Development Center provides is the Small Business Management Program. And that is one of the cornerstone services, not just of our SBDC, but of the SBDC network in Oregon. We call it our key service. And about half the centers in the state offer a Small Business Management Program. Ours happens to be one of the largest in the state, despite the fact that we're one of the smallest centers and probably the smallest school, depending on how you measure it. But our SBM, personal story, this is how I first became acquainted with the Small Business Development Center. My wife and I, who apparently is on your agenda for later tonight, owned a business once in Lincoln City. And in the thick of the recession, we thought we could use the help of some experts and to talk things out, and we joined the SBM program. And I was sold on it from the inside out. It's a very robust academic year-long program that begins with a counseling appointment with an advisor that is assigned to you for the year. And you sort of self-select that advisor based on the expertise and the assistance you're looking for over the course of the year. We set a strategic plan with you, what you set out to, what you want to set out to achieve. And then monthly, as the year-long academic program goes, we check in with you in counseling sessions and talk about progress as we approach those goalposts. It is, it's just a remarkable program, and it's one that you've actually made possible. We'll get to the numbers here in just a second. For a number, I think it's more than a dozen small businesses in Lincoln City throughout the urban renewal district have taken advantage of it this past year. But in addition to that year-long academic Small Business Management Program, we have a number of other classes that we offer on a regular basis, also that any business watching tonight who might be located physically within the urban renewal district is able to participate in. Accounting of various stripes and types, whether that's cloud-based, whether that's accounting software like QuickBooks or what have you. Marketing, technology, doing business in Lincoln County, business law, various social media marketing, and other technology classes, and an awful lot more. Typically, we bring to the table about 25 different classes and workshops in a given academic term, fall through spring. And the summer, in addition to the eclipse events and our recruitment process for the upcoming Small Business Management Year, where we do a lot of intake interviews and talk to a lot of applicants to determine whether the SBM might be a good fit for them, we also conduct some additional classes like these over the summer months of July and August. So this program in the year just ended, it's actually not quite ended yet, Thursday night of this week, actually, you're all invited. We're celebrating the graduation of our Small Business Management Program in Newport. I didn't give you much notice, but I'm sure the invitations are somewhere in the mail. But the, so we have a grand total of 30 graduates who are finishing the SBM program, and we're celebrating them with this event this Thursday night. 13 of them happen to be from within the urban renewal district in Lincoln City, not just North County, but within the district, and therefore funded by this program. We had an additional 27 district businesses that were able to take advantage of other workshops and classes throughout the year, separate from the Small Business Management Program, 13. And after this week's graduation on Thursday, I'd be happy to report back, it's at that event every year that we survey everyone, we talk about their impacts that might have been derived from their work with us, whether that's job creation, job retention, capital infusion. We've had a lot of people who've been applying for and securing funding for various expansions and efforts, and I'll have those figures. I'm sorry about the timing, the way it worked, but I'll have those Thursday evening for you. We did, at the end of every one of our sessions, actually throughout the year, which is every month, we do survey, just evaluate our classes. And this last time, this was last month in Lincoln City, we surveyed our class, and a few quotes came off the forms that I wanted to share with you. Observations of the year just ended. One of them said that this class was like being in a think tank. Another one said, "I feel more accountable to myself, and I feel that I'm no longer flying by the seat of my pants." And I think, I love this. In fact, I love it so much, I used it on my literature that we're using to hand out to people who ask about the program this summer. And I brought some to share with you all. I'll give them to Kate after. But this speaks directly to something we tell people all the time, that this program is designed to help you work on your business, not just in your business, to take a step back and look forward and strategize and that sort of thing. And so I was really, really pleased to see that. Another wrote, "I often refer to my notes, specifically here, of meetings with Craig Grant, her business advisor. To correct my bad habits, there are also key phrases I've stolen from him to correct behaviors. He also taught me what questions to ask. He preached having confidence and how that can translate. Direct, smart, and an invaluable experience in all. I'm super proud to have had this chance. Thank you to the Urban Renewal Scholarship." And I promise, we didn't coach that, but I think it's clear that the 13 participants who have finished this program with the support of the city and the urban renewal agency absolutely know where that support came from. And we hear that each and every, well, billing cycle, certainly. And with that, I think I'm within my 10 minutes. I'd like to open it up to any questions, concerns you may have. I sincerely hope that you join us at the graduation. Bill Hall is speaking this year. We had David Gonberg speak last year. President Riesling will be on hand. It's an important day for us at the college, because these people, not that the participants in our regular workshops and classes aren't important too, but these businesses have put in a ton of sweat equity. Each one of them is actually, we call them a full-time student at Oregon Coast Community College, because of the hours that they're putting in between sessions, not to mention the time in class and with their counseling sessions. And again, as a participant, I can tell you, that's legit time. Again, what time is that? It's 6:00 PM, the Newport Center, which is in South Beach, in the comments. If you're coming, give us a call. Shirley's making food.
Coffee.
We're still on a shoestring, even with your support. So we cook our own food, if that tells you something. We're a no-frills organization. Also why we're meeting in the comments. We're going to make it look as formal as we can.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to thank you for your outstanding job that you do. And that's a check the city should feel happy about signing.
Well, I appreciate it. In the years past, I've had the forethought to bring Small Business Management participants to you and letters, and I did not do that this time. To be honest, this kind of snuck up on me, and I apologize to Allison and to you folks for that. But I can tell you that it would be an easy lift to get some folks to send letters and to send you their thanks. We typically do that, again, at graduation. We have a number of providers and scholarships and supports, and we encourage people to send letters of thanks, and I know you'll be hearing from folks. But thank you for that. And really, it's an inspiring group of people. All sorts of different industries, by the way. We have manufacturing, we have shrimp fishery people, we have retail, we have artists. It's a vibrant group.
I want to thank you for all the opportunities you have for our urban renewal businesses. And as an SBM graduate prior to my election to council, I thank you for that program.
Excellent. You bet. And I shout out to Ron Spieso and Guy Faust, who built it over 20 years, and Misty Lambrecht, who's really taken it to new heights lately. It's been fun to watch. And while I'm here on the mic, I just, I need to invite the community, if they have any interest, and if you could share this with businesses that might take advantage. Dr. Alberto Flores is delivering a free lecture on the six steps to improve your business entirely in Spanish, with Spanish handouts and materials. We are trying to rapidly grow our Latino business outreach and support. And this will be free. It will be here in Lincoln City. It's the only place in the county we're offering it, and it's coming on June 28th. And it's all over our website, if you'd like to know more.
Which is orgoncoast.org?
Yeah, orgoncoastcc.org, or you can go straight to the chase and go to orgoncoastbusiness.com, which is our SBDC website.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive citizen comments on proposed resolution UR 201703, adopting the Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Year 2017-18 budget. I need to state that I'm met with a statutory conflict of interest. I must declare an actual conflict of interest. The funding proposed in budget line item 6570155, entitled Economic Development Grant Program, referred to in the budget message of 6370155, among many other things, includes funds which could be used to fulfill the grant to the Bay Area Merchants Association for their downtown manager. Funding of this grant pays my salary. This is a known financial outcome of decisions made in the urban renewal budget. I must recuse myself, refrain from any discussion, and not participate in voting on this matter. I turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Casper.
It is now 5:20 PM. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of accepting public comment on the proposed resolution number UR 2017-03, adopting the Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Year 2017-18 budget. Will the staff, is there staff present to make a report?
We're required to hold a public hearing on the budget, so we just need to open the public hearing. I don't believe there were any changes made from the budget as proposed and what the budget committee approved.
Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to speak on the proposed Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Year 2017-18 budget? Anyone there? I don't see anyone. There's no senior testimony. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Public hearing is first and second. We'll close it. Any discussion? Oh, we have to vote. Can we close it? Can we close the public hearing in the record? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion regarding the adopting the budget? Discussion?
I think it's a pretty cut-and-drying budget, and we want to work through the budget committee.
Okay.
Yeah, and Vice Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to be recusing myself, as I was not in attendance for most of the meeting, and I have not had a chance to review all. My mother passed that week, and I haven't been able to watch any of it, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the budget for the Urban Renewal Agency Fiscal Year 2017-18 budget?
I believe you have a resolution for that purpose.
We have a resolution? Oh, okay.
Can we move that up from the agenda?
You could, and that would help. And so Walkie have to walk back and forth.
Okay. Okay, resolution UR 2017-03 to adopt the budget. Is there a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved to approve?
To approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor of adopting resolution UR 2017-03, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition?
Do we?
Want to discuss it? Roll call? Okay.
Yes.
And Williams is abstaining. Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. Resolutions abstained as well.
And bringing back the real chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Casper. Next item on the agenda is to receive citizen comments on proposed real property transfers. It's now 5:24 PM. The hearing is now open to accept public comment on the disposition and development agreements for real property transfers of the Ballard Building and the D-Lake School Building from the Urban Renewal Agency to the city of Lincoln City. Counselors, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest or personal bias?
I just made a correction.
No, this is just about abstentions, disqualification, conflict of interest, personal bias. Is it about that?
It was just the word counselor. I think we're in the.
Excuse me. Thank you. Thank you. My script did not say agency member, and I missed that one. Thank you. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of an agency member to participate in this matter? Seeing and hearing none. Okay. After the staff presentation, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If we have questions, your time responding will be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please sign your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. And when you come to speak, please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. And now is the time for the staff to please present its report.
Hello, good evening. So I just wanted to clarify the reason why we have such long documents. They're disposition and development agreements, or DDAs. And the reason why we're using a DDA is because in the urban renewal plan, in order to dispose of property, we have to do that through the use of a DDA or through the agreement. So that's why you have two very official-looking documents to transfer these properties. Are there any questions that we can answer for you? Want to add anything? Any members have questions?
I had a few minor typos, and also, I did some research this afternoon about the underground storage tank, which probably is still in place at the D-Lake School. The language in the agreement refers to any undisclosed, previously undisclosed underground tank, and.
Just for clarity, I added a second reference to, except for previously disclosed, just so it was clear.
And it's been disclosed in our agreements previously.
And I made the other corrections that you pointed out.
Thank you very much. Okay. No agency members have any questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Any member of the audience wish to provide comment? I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and close the record.
Move to close the hearing and close the record?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the hearing and close the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, any, I was going to say further comments, but we haven't had any comments. Yes?
Do the employees of the two buildings now become city employees?
We're just transferring the real property from the Urban Renewal Agency to the city, because the Urban Renewal Agency should not be involved in ongoing maintenance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So we have.
Both items are listed under Special Order of Business for Action.
Right. And it's just the agreement, correct? So.
The motion to approve the disposition development agreements, would that be?
They're separately listed on the agenda under G6 and G7, so you probably need a motion on each one.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd make the motion that the agency accept the, or execute the agreement on the Ballard Building to, of disposition and development agreement?
I believe there's a.
Suggested.
An agreement, then there's also a, as an exhibit to that, a quick claim deed? Should we include that in the motion?
I think approval of the agreement would authorize approval of the deed in the form that's attached.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion as second to direct signing of the disposition. Sorry, I'm trying to find the name of it. Disposition and development agreement to transfer the Ballard Building, which houses the Lincoln City Glass Studio from the Urban Renewal Agency to the city of Lincoln City. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call, please.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Walkie?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next item on the Special Order of Business is the real property transfer of the D-Lake School, which currently houses the Lincoln City Cultural Center.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion that the agency agreed to execute the Devil's Lake School Building disposition and development agreement?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to direct execution of the disposition and development agreement for transfer of ownership from the Urban Renewal Agency to the city of Lincoln City of the D-Lake School Building. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Walkie?
Yes.
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
And Walkie?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda was the resolution, which has already been dealt with, and we did not have an Urban Renewal Agency executive session or work session tonight. Are there any outstanding issues for any, would the agency members would like to bring up?
No.
Any other agency member comments? Quiet group tonight. All right. Thank you, and meeting's adjourned.
Mics are off.